Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, September 13th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9 North, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti? Absent. Mr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. And Chairman Nansen will be late. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation under God, in the great law of liberty and justice for all.
Jose, thank you for having a flag in the background.
So I swear the professionals in, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you, professionals, thank you. Please raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help to God. Thank you, is that Matt Howard back there? So tonight, we have Mr. Howard, Mr. Cunliffe, Ms. Bell, and Ms. Sparrow, and I believe Mr. Aguirre is also here, all sworn, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, July 26th, 2021, eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Merton, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Hughes makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Vice Chair.
Was that Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Got it, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Have more ready. The panelists, I'm just spinning them over.
Okay.
Regular meeting, August 9th, 2021, eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen.
I'll make a motion, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mertens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda, vouchers, do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Thank you. Item seven on the agenda, correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
I just want to introduce Mr. Moretti to the meeting. No correspondence tonight.
Welcome, Mr. Moretti.
There we go, good evening, everybody, sorry, I'm a little late.
We've got you.
Nansen.
Okay, resolutions are up next, and we have a resolution. Case number BA 20, Tac 107 slash 366 Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. Resolution granting use variance approval, eligible voters Hughes, Moretti, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Let the record show that Chairman Nansen is joining us. We should wait until Chairman Nansen is able to chime in.
Hey, there he is. Sorry, I'm late. Okay.
Okay, what we have in front of us is the resolution, case number BA 20, Tac 107, 366 Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. It's a resolution granting a use variance approval, eligible voters Hughes, Moretti, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Make a motion.
Chairman makes a notion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Moretti. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution memorialized.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to turn it back over to Chairman Nansen to present the applications before the board. Item nine on the agenda, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Seiya, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I know you did a great job, as usual, really appreciate it. Okay, case before the board, case number BA 2111 Walter Miller. Bulk variance for construction of single-family dwelling and septic system on an undersized lot. Application of Walter A. Miller as applicant in Full Time Properties LLC as owner seeking a bulk variance approval to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with septic field located on the east side of the principal structure in both Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Matthews Road, front yard. On an underdeveloped, undersized lot, other improvements include construction of an elevated front deck porch with stairs, elevated rear deck porch with stairs, one-story detached garage, gravel driveway servicing lot, both lots, I'm sorry. Both lots, single-family dwelling and the detached garage mapped through road on premises known as Block 221 Lot 1 at the corner of Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Matthews Road. This application was partially heard August 9th, 2021, when it was carried to September 13th with no further. Expiration date, September 30th, 2021. Eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Gonzalez, Nansen. Welcome. Mr. Miller?
Hello?
Yeah. I got your voice, I don't see you, though.
Trying to figure out how to do that. How's that? Hi there.
Howdy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, I also have with me Albert Verossi, my professional engineer, requested to give some testimony as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, before we begin, can we clarify the eligible voters again? Eileen, can we just run down the list one more time? Do you have that, the eligible voters?
Yeah.
I have Mr. Kanter, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Mertens, Mr. Moretti, Mr. Seiya, Mr. Gonzalez, and Chairman Nansen.
Okay, so there's six eligible voters.
Yeah. Mr. Roscoe? Have you reviewed this case?
Yes.
So that would be seven.
And you'll sign the certification, right, Jose?
Eh, I signed it, but I don't remember exactly that one. I want to say yes, 100%.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my recollection, and again, I'll defer to Charlie, it shows that this was partially heard, I don't believe it was, unless it wasn't, we didn't get very far into it.
No, we did not.
So what I would propose, just to keep the record clean, let's take it right from the beginning, let me re-swear the witnesses so that there's no question about Jose being able to hear it.
You have a problem with that, Mr. Miller?
Not at all.
Okay, okay, so with that, Mr. Miller and Mr. Verossi, would you just raise your right hands, we'll swear you in. Swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help to God.
Yes, I do.
Okay, yes, and Mr. Miller, state your name for the record.
Walter Miller.
And thank you, Mr. Verossi.
Albert Verossi.
Thank you, all sworn, and again, I'm going to ask you to take it from the top, just so the record is complete, thank you.
All right, so I guess what I'm looking and proposing to do here with this property is to build a single-family dwelling with a detached garage on the property. As reviewed already or stated through the application, it's an ARE 1 with well and septic, so at this point, it looks like my need for variances for my front yard setbacks on both the single-family dwelling and the detached garage. With that, the house, there was the house is going to, originally I had shown for a basement, but that had been changed, modified, and eliminated, now it's going to be just a crawl space home with a three-bedroom, two-bath, with a potential future expansion on the second floor with an expanded roof. The intention for that area is for, if in the future, I would like to move the bedrooms upstairs and open up a family room, I'd be able to make the house into a four-bedroom house. The design with the septic is for a four-bedroom, and it's not my intention to do any more than four bedrooms at any time in the future without, of course, any kind of substantial modifications or requests for variance, I'm sure, so with that, the, there were just a couple things, I guess, in the review that had come up with regards to the site. The first thing is, that I noted was that I had originally proposed for gravel driveways on the house, on the single-family dwelling, and also for the detached. We revised that to show an asphalt driveway on the house. I still would like to keep a gravel driveway, I mean, my intention for that was just to allow for, I know that there's some concern about the directing of water on the property, and I just assumed with a gravel driveway, it would allow for water to continue to move across in its natural direction. So I know there was also a concern over the the narrowness of the asphalt driveway shown at 16-foot. I have no problem expanding that up to 20 feet to allow for a full two cars to be able to park in the driveway for the single-family dwelling. There are, as far as the grading in the drainage, so what we did was, we're trying to keep the, we're trying to limit the amount of fill and the amount of modifications to the contour, the existing contours, but of course, there's a need for the septic system to be installed. So by, my original plan was to have the house face Lakewood Farmingdale Road, which now we're turning that to Matthews Road. And by doing that, it allows me to be able to actually bring the septic system closer to the house, just because of the limitations under the state requirements of septic systems, which allows us to just maintain a more just I guess, a lesser grade on the system, so it doesn't necessarily look like a big mounded system, even though it is classified as a mounded system, it wouldn't be what you would naturally expect to see of a mounded system. We were going to be able to grade it into the existing contour of the property to not make it look just so obstructive. So with that, I know that there was some question over some of the maximum grading that we had shown on the septic system itself, on the septic plans. We did show the minimums and maximums, just so the state 79A requirements had shown, had been shown as far as for the submittal, but the intention is to keep the top of the grade of the septic system as close as possible to 75.4, but I could let Albert Verossi answer some, any questions on that. And there's some concerns that TNM had with regards to just the grading along Matthews Road and the grading along the main road, Lakewood Farmingdale, so I believe that we're going to make an effort to comply and work with whatever swelling is necessary to make sure that we can keep the water moving and alleviating the concerns there. But again, I think Mr. Verossi can answer some of those questions. And there, we also had shown a rain garden on the south side to capture the water, the stormwater runoff from the house, from the roof. I have no concern with putting in dry wells as well, and moving them a little bit closer if necessary for being able to comply with, I guess, the limits of being near the seasonal high water table. But it was really my idea just to put a rain garden there to make it look a little bit nicer. But if it's better to have that, I guess we can provide some calculations and come to compliance with that, make sure that we satisfy whatever requirements to capture the stormwater runoff. And then I know there were just a couple other revisions that need to be met, that if there's any questions on them, of course, we'll make sure that we revise the plans and comply with those requirements as well, with regards to the location of the site triangle. As far as the, I know that we had now shown the right-of-way easement that had been mentioned at the previous meeting. I also provided the copy of the GP6 permit and the septic design, just showing that we are, we have that information, you know, ready to go. So I think that's about all I have as far as just making known what this project consists of.
Mr. Miller, I've got one question.
Yes.
Where is Matthew Road on here?
Where is Matthew Road on, where are we looking at?
Yeah, on your drawings, on any of the drawings.
Matthew Road is the north, is north of the property?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's just indicated as a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way.
Okay, but that's Matthew Road, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
We need to have, have that labeled, you know, we need to, none of the drawings have Matthew Road labeled. That I see, that's why I was asking.
So, and then, Mr. Chair, just to add a couple comments, so just to clarify, I think when we discussed at the last hearing, I think the board was preferential to that easement across the property front, it's just making sure that it's a roadway widening easement, not a right-of-way dedication to not impact any setback requirements or, you know, create it, and or, you know, make an already-narrowed lot even more narrower. And just to clarify for the board, so the predominant changes that the applicant proposed, as he noted, both the detached garage and the single-family dwelling have been rotated 90 degrees. So they both now technically front, even though it's a corner lot, the entrance, main entrance to both of those structures now fronts on Matthews Road. So in terms of, previously, they needed a side yard setback variance for the principal structure because they rotated it 90 degrees, and now it's, you know, the width of the dwelling now coincides with the long part of the lot, they eliminated a side yard setback variance requirement. They still do need the front yard setback requirement to, variance to Matthews Road for both the single-family dwelling and for the detached garage. As Mr. Miller noted, this is, is a lot that's not serviced by public sewer, so it's subject to the front yard and front, rear, and side yard setback requirements of the RE 1. 50-foot is required in the zone, 30-foot's currently proposed. That's no change from what was previously proposed, but like I mentioned, they did eliminate the the side yard setback variance. Mr. Miller indicated they converted the gravel driveway to the main dwelling to asphalt. Mr. Miller, you have no issue with complying with the pavement section requirement for residential driveways?
Not at all.
Okay, and then gravel driveways, I'll just note for the board, there is no requirement that driveways for detached structures, accessory structures have a separate paved driveway, I think the ordinance only requires it for the principal structure. So I would not take exception to that. I don't think Matthews, if this was a detached driveway on Lakewood Farmingdale Road or a high-traffic road, I would say maybe it should be paved or have an asphalt apron. But given this is a dead-end street to Central Avenue, I don't think has full access through to Central Avenue, I wouldn't take exception to that. As far as the property itself, they need a technical waiver for not providing curb and sidewalk along either the frontages. I'll say, none of the properties on Lakewood Farmingdale Road adjacent to the property have curbed sidewalk. On the north side of Matthews Road, a couple of those properties do have some curbs, some block wall. Having said that, I don't know that I would recommend we install that, we talked about some, some concerns with Matthews Road sheet flowing across the property from north to to south, any curb could cause a drainage issue or exacerbate a drainage issue there. They did make revisions to the septic system, they pulled it back off of Lakewood Farmingdale Road. I looked back at the previous iteration of the plans, they did soften the grading, I think the septic system previously to the center of the septic system was at 76.8, now it's proposed at 75.4, as Mr. Miller indicated. The one question that I would still have for Mr. Verossi, if he's the professional that prepared, prepared the septic system design, is, did, one, have you submitted anything to Monmouth County Board of Health for approval, and then, two, did you explore any alternate designs for the septic system? I know there are, you know, you can provide additional pretreatment to, to reduce the separation required from the bottom of this, the, the septic disposal bed to seasonal high water table. Was that explored at all with this, with this design? Mr. Chair, before Mr. Verossi testifies, I'm sure you'll want the board to let me hear his credentials.
Yeah, get your credential, your education and background, please.
Been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey since September of 1990. Appeared before various boards, primarily in Monmouth and Ocean County. Mostly licensed, and a certified municipal engineer.
What's your education?
TNM associates, Donald Smith associates, and was principal at East Coast Engineering before my car accident.
Okay, your education?
What's that?
Where'd you go to school?
Oh, I got a Bachelor of Science of Civil Engineering at the University of New Mexico in 1986.
Okay, sir, we accept your credentials, sir. Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, so, Mr. Verossi, in your preparation for the design of the septic system, did you explore any alternative designs to reduce the mounting height and separation from seasonal high water table from the bottom of the disposal field?
I just used the standard depth seasonal high water table as provided, and it provided for a choice of systems, and, but that's limited in that chapter 199 to an MSR system, so that's what we went with.
Okay, but, I mean, from the board's perspective, you know, and I, you know, I expect we'll hear some comments from, from the adjacent properties. Just general drainage patterns for the, for the area, both Matthews Road and Lakewood Farmingdale Road are relatively flat. I had some comments, obviously, about some additional swell grading needed to be proposed to, to maintain general drainage pattern, I think those roads drain, you know, onto the subject property. There is wetlands on the site where the applicant has obtained a GP6 for the proposed development. But anywhere where there's wetlands generally is a low-lying area where water sits. So, you know, now raising it three and a half feet, you know, there's a concern about water being directed onto other properties, causing issues for other properties where none did exist. You know, I would just present for the board's record is, you know, for individual septic systems, there are alternate designs where you can provide additional means of pretreatment before disposal field to reduce the need to mound as much. Typically, a four-foot zone of disposal or zone of treatment is required from the bottom of the septic system to seasonal high water table. You can provide pretreatment for an individual septic system that would allow you to reduce that zone of treatment to 18 inches to two feet. So you could potentially soften the grade another two to two and a half feet. Having said that, you know, there are cost implications that come with those, you know, pretreatment and things like that. You know, so, so those are things that the board, you know, may, will have to weigh with this, with this consideration, it's just, you know, right now, it's a, I think it's an improvement over what was previously proposed, but it's still, you know, three to three and a half foot of fill on a, on a site that didn't exist, where water previously runs onto the subject property, so I think that's something that needs to be discussed by the board, and I, I suppose, once we hear some of the comments from the public and the joiners, you know, we can discuss that further. Couple additional comments that I have, we talked about the site triangle easement. Well, Mr. Verossi has shown as far as dimensions is accurate, it just needs to be shown from the property lines, not the dredge payment, that could be a condition of any board approval. We'll just want to see a deed of easement and meets and bounds for both that and the roadway widening easement. They talked about the future living space on the second floor, they did get an approval, I believe, from Monmouth County Board of Health for, or no, the, sorry, the plans prepared by Mr. Verossi indicates it's designed for three initial bedrooms with a, with a possible addition of a fourth. That corresponds also with what's shown in the plans as far as parking, so I don't have any exception, especially if they're going to widen the driveway to 20 feet, I think that, you know, that the dwelling and the driveway itself should service the parking demand for the dwelling. You're not going to have people parking on Matthews Road or walking down to that, you know, accessory driveway, detached garage for parking. See if I got anything else, or as far as the rain garden, I have no issue with the rain garden, I just want to see some calculations, so that it's sized and some construction details that it's sized for a water quality storm, and then just the location, the final location needs to be not within, you know, any required separation distance to the septic system or to the proposed wall, so I think there's room on the site, I just, you know, that needs to just be shifted and worked out as a condition of any board approval. And let's see if I got anything else. And then we had some questions about what exactly is being proposed around the site, they did revise the plans. Previously, I think they had a, they were filling in front of the dwelling like seven or eight feet to have a porch at grade plus or minus, and then a walkout basement essentially at the rear. This, as I noted, they softened the grading, everything is two stories, so it's at grade for the first story. The deck at the front and the back, it's technically elevated, but I think it's plus or minus four steps to the deck, so it's not, you know, a deck at 10 feet above grade as was previously proposed in the rear. So I think overall, it's definitely an improvement, but I'd reserve to make additional comment based off of, you know, additional testimony and comments from, from the public. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do you, no direct questions at this time?
No, they touched on most of it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
None at this time for me.
Can we just get a quick clarification on what's being uh paved and what's gravel? I'm I know we've heard two different things here, so I want to get clarification.
All the driveways on the site are proposed with grading. So other than the building itself, everything else is gravel.
And asphalt on the house.
Okay, so they're going going from there to the to the detached garage will be gravel.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to get clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Moretti?
Nothing for me at this time.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Mr. Roscoe?
Okay.
Mr. Sayah?
You know, I'm thinking, listening to what Charlie's saying and wondering why. You know, it in appearance wise, Mr. Miller saying that we have a better grade in the front. But you know, Charlie's saying that we're still three foot above grade when it comes to water runoff. So that leads me to wonder, you know, what are the implications to the surrounding area? The adjacent properties when it comes to stormwater, et cetera.
Currently, about half of the site is uh contained by wetlands. And then the the front half of the site drains to a low point about a hundred and fifty feet back. To the adjoining property to the south.
That that would be behind the detached.
Twenty six thousand feet.
It would be about center of the. They had asked if it was going behind the detached garage.
Well, a little bit will in the uh. When we when we developed the site, about half of that twenty six thousand feet or thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. Will continue in the direction it's going and the front half will drain towards the street. And uh go down Matthews in a westerly fashion. Towards the front of the garage, across the gravel and to the wetlands. Or flow in front of that over to the neighborhood on the south side.
So there's going to be a swell created, correct, in grading?
Plus, we have a uh rain garden to limit the flow. Uh so the impervious area will be captured, so the entire structure will be captured. In the rain garden before leaving the property uh to the south.
So basically.
Or we could uh we could modify that to. Drywells from the damp spots to uh increase in the uh curvaceous. Impervious area will be all captured uh by the. Either the rain garden or the drywells uh for whatever design storm is.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if if we go dry wells, that's basically going to capture most of the water runoff as we know, right?
Yeah, typically for residential development, we require all roof layers to be directed to a drywall size for the water quality storm. That's uh one point two five inches of rain in two hours. Um so they could similarly do the same for a rain garden. Rain garden, you would uh typically do like a gravel storage bed to a certain depth. And then you would do some soil plantings, soil with plantings above that. Uh and you get your storage out of the 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 stone underneath the the plantings. And then also your plantings are supposed to theoretically, you know, soak up some of that runoff too. Uh there's more than one way to skin a cat. I think either of those options i- is acceptable, generally speaking. When water table is very shallow, uh sometimes it's not always practical to put in drywells. Um so you know, rain garden, I think, might be the more appropriate in this situation. And also give some kind of aesthetic, you know, um appeal to the to the development. Um uh especially when we're taking a wooded site and now putting hards hard structures on an impervious surface. That might help soften some of that. My my concern would just be whatever they whatever the board decides they want, it just has to be sized appropriately. And then um as I'm showing the site plan, the most current site plan the applicant has submitted. Um there's a well proposed to the southwest of the dwelling. Wells, you're not allowed to have uh like drywells or watercourses within fifty feet of those. This is a fifty foot diameter. This is the location of the drywell. You know, so we'd either have to shift somewhere uh to the east towards Lakewood Farmingdale Road. Um which obviously gets closer to the septic disposal field or possibly somewhere closer on Matthews in the front yard area. Um you know, so and just to give the board pers- perspective, so this is sheet two of the plan. Matthews Road is is on the 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 top part of of the property here, Lakewood Farmingdale Road is on the east. Uh obviously, the applicant has wetlands on the property. Generally speaking, you've got seventy eighty two, seventy fifty nine, seventy thirty seven. So there appears to be an off-site low spot um on the neighboring property. Uh that coincides with some some vegetation, some wooded area on the neighbors neighbors property. So um you know, I think generally, water runs onto the neighbor's property, some of it sits on his property, some might go on to the neighbor's property. We just want to make sure that um, you know, if we're just elevating the site three feet. Lakewood Farmingdale Road seventy three twenty eight, seventy three twenty nine, seventy three twenty five. You know, we don't want to create a dam where water is now sitting on the edge of the road, causing an issue for the the traveling public. Same thing on Matthews Road, we're raising it, you know, three feet and you got seventy two thirty five, seventy two fifty eight. So there's some pitch, it's maybe point three percent, which is very low for for even pavement. Um so you know, I think, like I noted, uh the applicant has agreed they can provide some additional swell grading. Also along the along the front, some swell grading to get water to the back of the site to kind of go where it goes now. Um it's just, you know, raising the site three feet. You know, how much we can achieve that slope grading without really pushing the site runoff onto the neighbors. Um you know, I think that's that's the concern.
What about running that, sloping it all into a water garden?
I mean, that could be done too. I mean, if the board wanted something, you know, a little bit more. You know, elongated along this property line or, you know, away from the well. That's something that could be done, you know, we we've we've done it where, you know, some residents have put in like a recharge pipe and trench. You know what I mean? To kind of intercept any of that runoff. Um but we already had the discussion, obviously, with water table being a concern. But yeah, I mean, a rain garden, maybe something more elongated along the property line. That might also be able to intercept some of that runoff and then give it a chance to be, you know, soaked up by the plantings. And then, you know, get into the groundwater table. Um you know, my main concern, like I said, is, you know, look at the contours. Water that previously ran down this way, now we're raising the site three feet, we're pushing water back on to the road. You know, um we want to maintain general drainage patterns, not cause drainage issues on the road. But also, you know, be cognizant of, you know, the adjoining property owners as well.
Charlie, do you think you can get this worked out to where no water is running off? Trying to keep it on site.
I mean, could they create a low spot on their property and like a natural depression with plantings? And have everything on their property drained to that low area? Conceivably, yes. Um you know, having said that, natural drainage patterns do, it looks like some of it is. Draining onto the neighboring property, so I mean, it wouldn't be a complete change. It's just a matter of, you know, are we channelizing the water and getting it there faster would be the concern. But yes, Mr. Chair, I think they could create some low spots on their site, maybe a a large rain garden elsewhere on the site. And and contain a lot of that runoff would be a possibility.
Mr. Matthew, do you have any issues with that?
Mr. Chair, can I just chime in real quick? It's not as, this isn't a site I have reviewed, but um my only concern with rain gardens, while I do really like them and encourage them. Um if the deer destroy them before they're really even established, they're not going to do much. So I don't know if something, if they could consider, you know, even some sort of like picket fence or something that's right on top of the rain garden. Maybe even temporary till it's, you know, established. But the deer will eat all those little tiny plants and then, you know, nothing will be in that rain garden.
Mr. Miller, do you have any issue with that?
Uh well, there were a few things. So as far as like, part of my concern with creating a rain garden, let's say. Um between the single family dwelling and the detached garage, as I was hoping to have an open yard. For uh honestly, for my grandchildren in the future to have a place to play. Um so I don't know if like that, if I if I were going to put a rain garden or maybe. Um expand to the one that's there now across that southerly line. I mean, I can go all the way across, maybe put a trench. Um you know, with the swell to it to capture water and to really slow reduce and slow down any of the runoff. I mean, the thing is, right now, the water is moving directly across this property and to the south. So I'm already, by the design, we are pushing water west about half of it. And then we're capturing, you know, the the stormwater. And so I was already reducing any flow into the neighbor neighbor's yard. Um so I, even though I'm increasing the grade, I'm still decreasing the overall flow. But um I am not necessarily against the idea of. I I think that putting a fence around a rain garden and it's going to start getting difficult for me to maintain it then. Um because it's it's very narrow, it's not necessarily a very wide area. So I would maybe prefer, and I'd have to um talk to Albert about the idea of maybe just doing some sort of underground. Uh basin or trench, you know, the like infiltrators to capture the water underground as long as that would work. And then maybe do some area drainage to allow the water to be soaked up. I I mean, I'm all for doing something. I just don't know if if I put something around the rain garden, it's going to be very hard to uh maintain that as well.
Yeah, I mean, uh you know, as currently depicted, is there some area where, you know, a recharge system could be installed? Um you know, with what with the proposed grading and and maintain separation distance from the well on septic. Yet conceivably, like I said, I just, I would need to see like as a condition of approval, an actual design for it. And you know, um like a test pitch showing where the water table is. Cause infiltration's great, but if the water table is halfway up the pipe, then it's not really doing us any good anyway. And it's, you know, water is overflowing right out of the thing before you, before it actually does anything for you. So um you know, I think those are details that can be worked out as a condition of approval. You know, whether it be a rain garden or 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 um a drywall system um to the satisfaction of my office. Um you know, I think that's something we could we could handle as a conditioner for approval, Mr. Chair.
And then the other thing is, if, you know. The fill, i- it might behoove you, Mr. Miller, to investigate, you know, an alternative septic. You know, um to maybe even lower the grade even further. You know, that that might be a possibility too. And then you don't, you're going to eliminate some of those those issues as far as grading and drainage.
So so I did look into the idea originally as far as options. And I know that there are options. Um my concern is right now. Um we meet and comply with a design that still is a gravity system out of the house. Anything that introduces any kind of pumping out of the house requires a substantial amount more maintenance and future failure. Um the house, I wouldn't really want to drop the overall uh finished floor elevation any lower. Because then.
I'm not talking about dropping the house elevation, but you can substantially decrease the amount of fill. The, you know, because the the, like I say, three, three and a half feet, that's the area of the septic, the house. Or in in surrounding area of that. Um i- if you lower the septic system, you're going to eliminate a lot of the fill in the septic area. That where you could probably grad gradually grade around the house from the seventy five. On, you know, can kind of work your contours a little different.
But. Well, that that. I, but even if the if the disposal bed was dropped down, even if I could reduce it by a foot. I'd still, by having the asphalt driveway, the house set up, I would want to have the grading up. And then contoured away from the house. I think it would, I don't think that would eliminate any of the real concerns. I think we would still need to create a swell. I think we would still need to somehow uh capture some of the water on the south. And just as we're talking about, even if the final grade on the septic were reduced. It would still create those issues, I think, that would still have to be addressed.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I mean, if if an alternate design were uh proposed, like I mentioned, you know, you can reduce it anywhere from two to. Two and a half feet and and proposed grade, you know, so seventy five four, I think Mr. Miller said was was what they were looking at currently with the center of the septic system. If we were two feet lower, you know, seventy three four, that's almost the same grade as what the existing um edge of road is. At Lakewood Farmingdale Road, if it was another half a foot, you know, we'd be, you know, seventy two, seventy five in that range, you know. So so now the lot where the septic disposal field is now, you know, the general drainage pattern in sense of. That yard area which kind of sheet flows from Lakewood Farmingdale Road onto the subject property. That pattern would be generally maintained, you know, there would still be some some swelling required to to maintain the pattern. Where it goes to the to the south and rear of the property. Uh but it would be a a lot more of a a subtle grading ch- change. As opposed to now the site's three foot higher and we have like a concentrated swell along the front of the property. You know, getting it around to the southerly property line and to where the existing low area is. So so I, you know, what I will say is, I I hear Mr. Miller's concern. I do know, in speaking with Board of Health, alternate septic designs, there is an enhanced maintenance burden with like pumping and 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 the pre-treatment. They do typically on their end require that the the um the owner has to do a deed restriction for maintenance. Because that is, uh you know, a continual concern as the property changes hands. Um and then it also does have, you know, an increased cost. But as this board is familiar with and and the consideration of any variance, you know, bulk ore use, you know, that's not something that is considered. You know, uh you know, by the board in in terms of, you know, validating, uh you know, variance and use variance relief. So.
So Albert here, so this three feet of fill is sort of. More seems more than it is because the slope off the Farmingdale Road drops quite a bit. Uh the three, what the two point seven percent slope from Farmingdale Road to the uh back. Southwest corner of the house is at two point seven percent. Now that's fairly gradual and uh I feel that the, we try to push the house and septic down. We're going to be getting closer to the seasonal high water table and uh future problems for the owner in regard to having. The somewhat feasible crawl space. Uh additionally, the septic system having more uh elevation above the sixty nine. And a half feet approximately elevation of the seasonal high water. Would provide for a better longevity of the septic system uh in the long run and maintenance of this property. I don't think that it's.
You didn't hear what I said. I would not drop the elevation of the house. I would leave the elevation there and then grade. You you could, you you could gra- grade to the house. But as it is right now, you're going to be filling the septic area from Lakewood Farmingdale. You're going to start and you're going to fill three and a half feet all the way back. I, what is the elevation on the the garage, detached garage?
I could, I could put a swell in between the septic bed and Lakewood Farmingdale Road. The only hesitation to that would it would uh would be that. It would be, you know, swell down and then look a little more moundy by dropping the grade and then bringing it back up. But that certainly could be accommodated.
Okay.
And I could pull that seventy two contour almost up to where it says street sign. I can't point to it, but. I can't point to it, but. I mean, the grades along there only seventy three feet, seventy three twenty nine. I certainly could put a swell in between there. And pull the seventy four contour closer to the or seventy three and seventy two contour up into that area. Uh, to. Pull that drainage coming drainage concerns off of what would be considered a swell on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. Onto our property and alongside our southerly border line to the uh. Rain garden if that's the desired way to go.
Charlie.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you know, what what I'll just say is, um, you know, could how it's currently shown, could they conceivably grade a swell? You know, to have water drain down. I don't know if you see the hand tool on my screen here down and around to the south area with how it's currently shown. Yes, would that make this pull these contours back and make it look more of a a drastic grade change and exacerbate the the what the mound looks like now? Uh, or is currently proposed? Yes, but dropping the septic system down, does that also flatten out this area then to allow water? The water course to naturally drain across and through the property, you know, I think that can be achieved as well as. You know, it's really up to the board, you know, does the septic system as it's currently proposed, does it cause any detrimental impact from a grading perspective? You know, from sight, um, visual aesthetic, uh, air open space and then also, you know, stormwater runoff to adjacent property. So, you know. I think maybe, you know, this is a discussion that can be continued once we hear some additional public comment and input. Um, from 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 the neighbors.
Okay. We don't, any other questions from the board? Can Charlie, can we get the full screen back? There we go. Christine, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions. I would just kind of like to reiterate what uh Charlie's been saying and, you know, from a planning perspective. Um. The uh mounding of the septic area, um. Just slightly concerned about the aesthetics of that, so, um. Landscaping and those types of things. Um, but, you know, my only concern is, uh, the the mounding.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions of the board, uh, do you have any further testimony, Mr. Miller?
I do not, no.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to open to public.
Make a motion to open to the public?
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
I'll second that, sir.
Seconding Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the public, meeting to public. Um, Eileen, if you wanna. Let, we'll do it. As I raise our hand, you'll have to go through the.
Want to make the announcement?
Comments and questions of the applicant?
There's one member of the public coming into the meeting.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, if you would just advise all of the members of the public that they would need to be sworn, give their names and their addresses, please.
Yes. Mr. Ricchio.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Before you begin, um, sir, I'm gonna swear you in, then I'm gonna ask for your full name and your address. Okay, so raise your right hand. Swear the testament I give this evening be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the true self of God.
Yes.
Thank you. And state your name for the record, please.
Brian Ricchio the second.
And your address, please.
One thirty three Squankum Road. It's adjacent to the south side of uh Mr. Miller's property.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, so my only concerns with uh with what's going on, I have no oppose to what Mr. Millen is uh wanting to do. It's just more or less the runoff from his property to my property, which is uh south of his property. Um, you know, back in that uh picture of uh everything and the elevation wise, the front. North side of our property has just the slighter higher slope towards Mr. Miller's property. And then as you get to the. Uh, you know, backside of the properties, it does, you know, slope back to us slightly. But our water table level is very, you know, higher ready and we do uh. Hold water in the backside of my property as well already. So my biggest concern is just the runoff from his property to ours.
What which lot is yours?
Uh, so I am directly right behind Mr. Miller. I do not know my lot off the top of uh my head or block. I'll be a hundred percent honest with you.
He's lot two, the property immediately to the south. So in the the plan sheet and the exhibit that we showed on the screen before, he's that property on the on the lower. Uh, lower hand side of the site.
Yeah, well, he's that full property now, correct?
Yep, yep, the full property just to the south.
Okay, got you. Okay. Hey, did you hear what they were discussing as far as as swelling to try to reduce the the sheet runoff over to there to your property?
Yes, I was, we were listening the 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 whole time and everything and and did understand what they're trying to accomplish. With pushing all the water to the backside of their property. You know, I just, like I said, my biggest issue is just the runoff, you know, is that gonna a hundred percent work? With the water table level in this area and where we are, um, you know, like I said, that's my only concern.
Okay. Very much noted. Mr. Miller, um, you heard one concern.
Well, I believe that um, I definitely intend to capture some of the water. We intended to move it. That towards the back of both of our properties. Um, and we're also capturing the stormwater. So I do, I feel that. It just naturally, we are already um reducing the runoff and I've taken that into consideration as well. And um, I definitely wanna make sure that um we do not increase any runoff onto your property.
Will be, we designed a system or will be designing or modifying the system to be in accordance with the. Uh, township's standards of stormwater management and the state guidelines on best management practices. To minimize uh flow in your direction.
Understand that.
Any any further? Mr. Ricchio?
Chairman?
Nope. That is, that is on my part.
Am I allowed to ask the witness a question?
Uh, who, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Yeah.
But Mr. Ricchio, does the water currently pool on your property?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Ricchio.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, Eileen.
If you would like to come into the meeting, you can raise your hands.
Anybody out there?
No one else?
Nobody else from the public.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close public.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public.
Okay, motion by Mr. Moretti.
I second it, Moretti.
Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, um. Charlie, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Is there any other?
I mean, for me, Mr. Chair, I think uh with what's currently shown, uh, can they regrade and kinda clarify? Uh, like the rain garden, possibly add some fence or either put it in as infiltration. I think those are things that can be worked out as a condition of approval. I'll just need to see, you know, some test pitches verifying wherever the location is. Make sure, you know, there's no issues with seasonal high water table. Um, and then obviously, you know, calculations just showing that whatever they're proposing is uh is sized appropriately. I I think really for the board, it's just whether or not, you know, they wanna see any change to the septic system as proposed or whether what's shown. You know, can still be accommodated, uh, you know, without any detrimental impact to the to the neighboring properties uh and, you know, grading just. To, you know, as it as it relates to to stormwater runoff. So, um, I think. All that can be worked out is a condition approval. I think the board just needs to, you know, decide whether what's shown with the septic as is, do they have any issue with it? Or, you know, uh, if if you do, do they need any changes? If not, uh, I think it can be worked out as is.
Charlie, also, the is all of the DEP information for the wetlands and the the. All of that in order?
They did provide a uh GP six permit. Um, what I would ask is just they provide a copy of the certified plan that was attached with the permit. Just so we can confirm whatever is approved by this board is in accordance with that in terms of uh impervious coverage and things like that. Um, and if anything differs materially that would impact that approval, you know, they'd have to obviously amend the permit as required, but. Like I said, as long as it's in accordance with what was approved by DEP, then, you know, they wouldn't really need to 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 go for any recertifications or anything like that.
You're you're comfortable with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay. Christine, do you have any planning? Questions?
No, no questions at this time.
As as far as. The detrimental to the positive negative criteria this for the variances. Do you see any problems if the board look favorably to this is gonna? Effect the master plan in any way or?
Um, I don't see any negatives to this besides, um, you know, as I stated earlier. The uh, the mounding, um, and that any aesthetic concerns that might have that, you know, might bring up. But, um, overall, I think it's an undersized lot, um, they're, you know. Requesting, um, just a front yard setback variance, some some minimal other things. I don't. See any detriment to the zone plan. Um, or master plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the board before we?
Mr. Chairman, I I have a question for Charlie.
Yes.
Uh, Charlie, given that the neighbor said that the water currently pools on his property. Is it your opinion that what we're proposing now, what we're requesting applicant to do would not make that problem worse? Um, you know, not it's not really his responsibility to make it better, but would not make it worse, given what we've seen in the last couple of weeks as far as rain?
So what I can tell you is we can't change the topography of an adjacent property. What the applicant can do is make changes to their proposed development. As far as, you know, they're gonna, they agreed to to size a rain garden and or a recharge system, you know, for the roof runoff. Uh, for the water quality storm. That's a typical requirement of any residential development. This isn't a major development, so they don't need stormwater management basins and things like that. Um, if this was a lot that was not undersized and didn't need any bulk setback requirements, you know, they could conceivably file a plot plan with the. Uh, you know, engineering department and get construction approvals. It's really because this is an undersized lot that has some bulk variances, that's requiring, uh, you know. The approvals by the board, um, you know, I think with the changes that they uh have agreed to with swales and the rain gardens and things like that. Um, you know, I will work with them on any residential compliance submissions to make sure that it's uh softening up. So that water isn't, uh, you know, directly um directed onto neighboring properties. The general drainage patterns are generally maintained. Um, you know, as as best possible on my end. But like I said, if water ponds are now and they do have a low area, you know. Water from from natural, the natural drainage course and then also uh water from their property is still gonna continue to, you know, pool in that low area. You know, there's nothing that this applicant can do as far as, you know, that existing condition, but what they can do on their property is to try to. Continue to maintain how how the property characteristics have been, you know, for some time since this is, you know. This has been undeveloped for the last sixty years. So, uh, you know, I think they can make much changes and concessions to uh to not exacerbate that condition.
Thank you. That's that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? See you none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bulk variance requested. Given all of the changes and adjustments that have been recommended by uh Mr. Conliff. And our other professionals.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion. I um think Mr. Cantor asked some good questions and I'm satisfied with the. Information that Charlie gave us and I see no issues with moving ahead with this, with the stipulations on finding the facts on record.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanna be sure of one thing. Charlie had posed the question about an alternative septic system. Do the mo- does the motion in the second um essentially indicate that the the present septic design? Is appropriate? Would that be the motion, gentlemen, Mr. Cantor, Mr. Mertens?
Um. Let me go back to Charlie that it asks, is is the current septic system appropriate or or are you recommending? Alteration to the the septic system?
And I know. I mean, it it meets, it meets the, it meets the regs from I'm a kind of board health for individual septic system. You know, they can grade the lot to generally maintain drainage pattern. So yes, it can be achieved. Um, having said that, like I said, if they were to lower it two feet with an alternate design, would it soften up the visual impact and maybe make it a little bit more? Subtle of a grading impact, certainly, but I think with what's proposed, they can still accommodate and maintain general drainage drainage conditions.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that for a potential resolution. Mr. Cantor, thank you.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable, Mr. Cantor, as part of your um motion?
It's acceptable, yes.
And Mr. Mertens, does that change anything on your end?
Not at all. I'm good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Eileen, can we get a real call, please?
Yes, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Um, yeah, I just would like to just go ahead and and second what they're saying about the, you know, we're working with Charlie of the drainage. I think that's key and obviously being cognizant of the. Person uh that came on from the south. And also to just to add to, you know, fulfill Charlie's uh desire to get those DEP. Uh, documents that he was looking for just to complete the file, I say yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Uh, I would like to believe, uh, Ms. Bell, she made reference to an mound being a little bit high. Is it all right with her to go with the present? Uh, design that uh Mr. Conliff was recommending, or would she like to see that mound lowered?
Um, I think that Mr. Conliff, uh, Conliff's recommendation is fine.
Uh, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
And Chairman Ensign?
Based on our testimony that was. Placed on the record, I my my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much.
Work with Charlie, please.
Definitely will. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Eileen, at this time, we're gonna take a little ten minute break here.
My board is taking a ten minute break and will return at eight twenty six P M.
Thank you. Okay, Eileen, I guess we could call everybody back.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay, next case before the board. Well, let let me get everybody, everybody back.
Yep, Christian, yeah.
Yes.
When did you move? Okay, case before the board, case number BA twenty one oh six, Robert Lewaski. Use variance preliminary final major site plan with bulk variances. Application of Robert Lewaski as applicant. in sixteen hundred Route nine L L C as owner, seeking use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variances to construct twenty four hundred square foot forty by sixty garage storage building in a two story addition, second story addition to existing one story residential dwelling and associate site improvements. And operate a contractor's business home premises known as block one thirty seven, lot fourteen, sixteen hundred U S Highway nine south. This case was originally scheduled for to be heard August ninth twenty twenty one, when it was carried to August twenty third, twenty twenty one, with no further notice. August twenty third, this application was carried to September thirteenth with no further notice. Expiration date, September twenty first twenty twenty one. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Christopher Hanlon. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Hanlon, Nieman and Wright in Freehold. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Laskowski. I have three witnesses. Uh, I would ask that you have some moderator join. Mr. Laskowski should be uh in the waiting room along with Anthony Maltese and Justin Osceola, my planner. Okay, looks like the gang is all here.
Okay, we'll just we'll just wait for them to um activate their video and audio, and then I will swear them in for you, Chris.
Okay. Anthony, I guess they want, there we go.
Okay, okay, Mr. Laskowski, um, Mr. Maltese and Mr. Osceola, would you please raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, out to God.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. All witnesses are sworn for the record, Mr. Laskowski, Mr. Maltese and Mr. Osceola, all sworn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, so this application involves a parcel on Route nine um, in Howell, uh, just slightly north of the um Home Depot. Uh, it's in an H D one zone. It's currently has a residence built on it. Uh, the residence has been used as an office building for the operation of a contractor business. My client plans to do something very similar. He wants to use that structure to house offices for contractor business. Um, he want, his plan is to slightly reduce the footprint of that building that's there. Add a second story. Then wants to add a garage in the back to facilitate storage and parking of some of his vehicles. Primary purpose is to operate his business operation out of this location. All of his work is done offsite, as you're going to hear. The application uh will improve the property by adding uh renovated sewer bed, lighting, parking, uh drainage, signage. The determination after a concept hearing is that the uh building needs a use variance, even though H D one does permit offices. Apparently, uh, it's been determined it doesn't permit offices for this purpose. So we seek a use variance for the expansion of the existing structure and a use variance for the addition of the garage. In addition, there are three buffer variances. We're going to request the parcel immediately south of this parcel is still used for residential purposes, even though that's not the zoning. It's been determined that the residential buffering requirements of the ordinance are applicable. In existing, there's an existing front yard setback variance. We'll ask you to continue. Uh, we're asking for sign variance for width and landscaping. There are numerous waivers that'll be discussed by the professionals. I won't go through that list now. My plan is to present the testimony of Mr. Laskowski first, and then Mr. Maltese, our engineer, and then Mr. Osceola, our planner. Um, with that, unless anyone has any questions, may I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I I have one question real quick to clarify something. There will be no residential aspect on this property, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, that clarified that. Okay.
Okay, sir. May, I'm sorry, am I ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Laskowski, you've been sworn. Um, what's your current business address, sir?
Uh, it's forty Sherrill Lane in Millstone, New Jersey. It's at my my residence right now.
Okay, what's the nature of your business?
Uh, we're primarily an industrial contractor and uh we do a little bit of commercial work, but mainly industrial.
All right, and what's the name of the business?
Uh, well, technically, it's E M Laskowski L L C. It's a phonetically named after my father and um it's doing business as Lastgo Contractors.
So how long has the business been in your family?
Um, well, I could say probably back in Poland uh for four generations. They uh they then moved to Venezuela, um, continued construction, and then my father moved here when he was twelve to America. Um, and he continued the the uh the company as well, but technically in the state of New Jersey since nineteen seventy eight.
All right, thank you. Um, so elaborate on uh what your company does, so the board understands uh the nature of your work and where most of your work will occur.
Sure. Um, so we're not your typical construction company. I would uh any idea you have of a residential company that is not us, we're, we have a niche or niche that we are uh very much an industrial contractor. We are in and out of uh many manufacturing facilities, um warehousing establishments. Mainly what we do is we renovate. Uh, we'll get a project where uh we're asked to fit out um an office for uh, they're gonna add more employees, or we're gonna uh install a production lines for manufacturing, things like that. So um all of our work is in an industrial park or an industrial setting.
Okay, um, so who you indicated you own the business. Are there any other owners?
No, just me.
And your plan is to uh, then, well, this property is already in the name of an L L C, correct? What's the name of the L L C?
Uh, it's named after the actual address, which is sixteen hundred Route nine L L C.
And and who owns that?
I as well.
Anyone else?
No, one hundred percent.
Okay, so our application refers to sixteen hundred U S Highway nine south, which is block one thirty seven, lot fourteen. What improvements do you propose to make for this property?
Um, improve agreeably, we'll say. But honestly, uh, the the building, the current office space, I guess is what we call it. Um, or or uh residential house, however you want to put it. We would reduce it about a five feet to incorporate a larger driveway. Um, we would add a second floor to the existing structure. Um, and I'm looking to uh build a garage uh in the back of the property.
Okay, so your plan for the resident, the the current building that's there, which you're going to expand, what's going to be located in that building?
Uh, just offices. It's gonna be um sort of like an open plan on the first floor and upstairs would be uh individual offices, um just to. Yeah, that would be it.
How many offices are you planning?
Uh, I think it's gonna be seven. I had to write it down because I had a bunch of numbers in my head. Um, but it's gonna be, I believe, six with uh like a uh an off open office on the first floor, so seven technically.
Okay, now what aspect of your contracting business has to take place on the premises?
Uh, only the backend. So uh, we're not fabricating anything here. We're not loading anything here, unloading anything here. Um, mainly, the purpose of the office is literally an office. It's the paperwork aspect, it's the accounts receivables, payables, uh proposals, the change orders, it's the project management, it's uh reviewing plans. Um, and it's making phone calls and uh that that's mainly, whatever you could consider in an office setting is what we would do.
How many uh, how many current office employees do you have now?
Uh, I have three. My father's had in and out, um, but so four, and then we're looking to expand to seven, I think would be real sweet spot.
Okay, and you you get an office too, right?
Yeah, hopefully, yes.
Okay, so um it what what else is planned for going into that uh existing building which you're going to expand? Anything other than those offices?
Um, no, I mean, there there's like a a print copy area. Um, and there's a conference room for us all to kind of get together and and uh brainstorm, but that's about it. And uh, there's an existing kitchen.
And you'll keep that for office use?
Right, correct. Yeah, there's a bathroom and there will be a proposed bathroom for the second floor, uh private.
Will any other businesses use the property?
No.
Are you you you're gonna allow any tenants in at all?
No.
Yeah, so it's exclusively for your business, which you want to move to Howard County?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we started up in uh, you know, in New Jersey, we were up in Cranford. Uh, my father was running the company. I took over the company a few years ago, and it's it's kind of out of my house right now. And it needs a home and and I'm hoping that Howe will be the home for it.
Okay, you're also planning a garage. That's a new structure that you want to add behind the existing structure, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, how large is that going to be?
Uh, approximately forty by sixteen.
And what will be the proposed use for that garage?
Mainly just uh storage for uh if we have, we have a couple of extra vehicles or the trailers, um tools that we have that have been uh currently um in the basement or in the garage or outside. It's the cleanup, to be honest with you. Um, there's stuff outside that I did want to put away and also longevity of the materials and tools.
Okay, so other than tools, what type of vehicles will be housed in this garage?
Um, it's probably gonna be an extra truck, uh maybe a van. Um, but um, I mean, if you if you call a trailer vehicle, it would be, I have two trailers that would be there as well.
Okay, and do you have any specialty equipment you use in connection with your projects that you're gonna keep in the garage?
Yeah, so we have a Bobcat or Skid steer, we have a couple of scissor lifts. Um, we have a forklift, um, and that mini excavator. That's that's kind of the the bulk of anything uh that we have that is of substance.
And will all that, will all of that be stored in that in that building?
Yes, correct. That's why I'm uh asking for that size, uh because currently all of that will be um able to fit. Uh, honestly, and I know you didn't ask me this question, but I don't anticipate buying any more equipment because quite frankly, we rent a lot. Um, and I'm probably good getting rid of some of this equipment, to be honest.
With regard to the specialty equipment you've described, will any of it be used on this site?
No, no, no.
All of the, all of those items of specialty equipment, they're used at your projects for your clients?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so do you, does the company also own uh pickup trucks?
Yes.
And where are they parked at night?
Uh, all the guys that I have working for me, either the project managers, the um supervisor and um the the, you know, we'll say uh facility technicians, they all keep their vans and trucks with them. So they drive them from their house to the workplace, wherever the project is, um and then they drive it back to their house. So if anything were to be stored here, it would just be in like one extra truck.
Okay, and one extra truck, you're talking about a large pickup truck?
Yeah, a a pickup truck, an F one fifty to an F three fifty, nothing greater than that. I do have a pick, a dump truck currently, but I'm selling that.
So um, as it relates to the vehicles that'll be brought to and kept on this property, is there gonna be anything larger than a large pickup truck?
No, no.
In addition, you're getting, you're planning some storage, there's some storage rooms proposed for the garage, correct?
Correct.
What's that storage for?
Um, so I would, I think there's like four storage uh rooms. One, we're looking to put uh extra files, even though we're in an age of uh internet and uh uh cloud and all of that, uh we are very old school. We have a lot, a lot of printouts, a lot of blueprints. Um, it's one would be the lock storage for files, one would be a lock storage for uh tools. We have um some specialty tools that are expensive that I wanna, I don't want to just leave in a garage setting. I want it to be an additional uh security measure, let's put it that way, as well as the paperwork. Um, and then we have some stainless steel uh material and and uh high end material that I would put in the in the third. And then the really just being a boy scout that I am, I like to, you know, plan for the future, um cover everything. The fourth one is is unknown at this point.
All right, so on a daily basis, how many employees will be working on site?
Uh, in the office, uh currently four, but hopefully if uh everything is going as it's been going, we would uh achieve seven.
And what are your, what are your, what are your hours of operation?
Uh, seven thirty to four. That's the the office. Uh, the reason that it's that early to believe, believe it or not, is uh we're trying to support the guys that are on site.
Okay, and and they start work that early?
Yeah, they do seven to three thirty. We give ourselves a half hour uh break, but otherwise, yeah.
All right, do you anticipate any visitors coming to the property?
I would say yes, but honestly, very few and far between. This is not something where I'm uh I'm not selling anything in the office. I'm not um soliciting or or asking people to come here for meetings. All of our meetings are on site uh at the different projects, um wherever they're situated. If there was a some a visitor, you know, we would get, again, not many. I'm not taking people, you know, just randomly driving in. Uh, we deal with clients that are Fortune five hundred companies. None of our clients are are single person um residential homes. These are, you know, multinational conglomerate uh companies. Nobody's coming to our site. We go to them. That's how we service them.
Uh, do you subcontract any?
We do, yes. Uh, so like licensed trades, we do.
Does, would your subcontractors come in to do a material takeoff or you're gonna have an area for them at your office to come in?
No, everything's done on site. So we have trailers. Uh, so for example, if there's a uh, currently, we have a project um in Lakewood, and in Lakewood, they have a a job trailer, they have bathroom facilities. The subcontractor goes there, signs in, everything's uh done in the job trailer, so they meet on site.
Okay.
Speaking of, I could just, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I could just clarify a couple of things. So we said seven thirty A M to four P M. Like, so is there any time where someone might, you know, an employee might arrive to the site earlier than seven thirty, you know, to come get equipment or anything like that, just to clarify for the board?
The only time that that would ever happen is if project manager manager screwed up, and hopefully that doesn't happen. So I do not anticipate that. Uh, the absolute earliest would be seven, but I'm gonna be honest, would be seven thirty is when everybody's gonna show up.
Okay, and that's Monday through Friday? Are there any end hours?
No.
A weekend, just Monday through Friday? Okay.
No.
And then as far as um, we talked about, obviously, everything other than maybe a pickup truck sized vehicle to be parked outside, everything else would be inside the building. Mr. Hanlon, would your, would your applicant have any issue with agreeing to a restriction of no outdoor storage of uh equipment or materials?
It it is, Bob, what's your reaction to that?
Uh, no, I mean, that's totally fine. I I personally, uh, not to go on and on, but to be honest with you, this building should be a reflection of our company. And if we, if it looks sloppy outside, it's a poor reflection on us. So I absolutely would not have anything outside. I do have stuff outside now, and believe me, it's killing me. I want to get it away and put away and make it look nice.
I I think that's just important for the for the record, and you know, obviously, there is a buffer required along the southerly property line and residence uses. You know, albeit not existing nonconforming, you know, I think that goes a long way to, you know, um, making sure that there's no impact to adjacent properties, you know, keeping everything concealed inside structures. I think that's, that's a positive for for this application. Uh, so that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, speaking of trailers, do you have any trailers which are ever gonna be on the property?
Yeah, I own two. Yes, I own two right now. Um, and they, I'm looking to put them in one of the bays, and they actually butt uh back to front in that storage unit, like the the garage. So they both.
Sorry. How big are they?
Uh, six, no. Sorry, I just got a notification. Sixteen feet and twelve feet.
All right, so as indicated, you your plan is to have them inside the garage. So there's no, so you won't have any trailers on the property outside of the garage?
No, no trailers. Yep, no, none of them.
Um, other than what you've described, the and I I I'm gonna get to deliveries in solid waste removal in a minute. Other than what you've described, do you anticipate any other traffic on the property?
Uh, no, I was joking with you guys earlier, DoorDash, you know, for lunch. Uh, we we do that, but I, that's really it. I mean, we would get, um, we do get U P S, FedEx, uh deliveries, we get the mail, um, things like that. But the uh, anything that would be bulk or palletized. But the, uh, anything that would be bulk or palletized, um, would be on site.
When you say on site, you're talking about the job sites, not the property, correct?
Correct, yeah, my apologies.
Okay, just want to make sure the board understands your use of that phrase. Um, so anything large gets delivered to your projects?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so what type of deliveries, um, would, do you anticipate any deliveries at this property other than by virtue of, of let's say, a large UPS truck?
No.
And what type of refuse do you anticipate will be generated from your onsite, from the operation on this property and how?
Yeah, I got you. Uh, honestly, I think it's just going to be, um, your typical, you know, you eat lunch, you throw it out, shredded paper, but we're, we're not shredding, you know, um, garbage bin full. We're, we're, you know, we're, uh, trying to just, uh, get rid of stuff that's hi- highly sensitive, we'll say, like proposals and things like that. Uh, but that's mainly the garbage that I can think of, to be honest. There's, we have dumpster, to clarify that. Uh, nobody's bringing garbage to this site sixteen hundred route nine. There are dumpsters on each of our off-site sites, if that makes sense.
Okay, so none of the work materials, the excess, the the, um, cuttings and things that are left over, none of that gets brought to your, your headquarters here?
No, no, our project managers are pretty good. I, you know, I'm very happy with how they, uh, they order material. And anything typically, if it's, um, maybe somebody you know, if you have something that's like a specific color, let's say it's a a carpet flooring for, uh, an office, or it's the ceiling tiles that are specific and they have, uh, you know, a CAC or NRC reading or whatever it is, the leftover is going to be given to the client. Um, as well as, you know, we're throwing out a lot and then any of the metal gets, um, recycled, so there's nothing coming back to the site.
Okay, I just, Mr. Hanlon, I just want to clarify, so, uh, so, you know, I mean, if you have any like plumbing materials or anything like the extra pipe, you know, even if it's just like four inch PVC pipe or anything like that, you're saying there's never a possibility that you might want to store any of it inside the garage or anything like that? You know, if you have some.
Oh, I mean, and I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so I just want to, you know, I don't want you to necessarily impose a restriction on yourself and let, you know what I mean? If you do have some overstock and some minor amount of material, you know, that can be used on the next job, you know, as long as it's stored inside a building, you know, that might not be something that the board might take issue with, as long as it's contained inside a building. I don't want you to, you know, hamstring yourself if if that's something that you might have or conceive of of being a need.
I agree with you. I think conceivably, yes, that is a possibility. But to be honest, most of it is, uh, you know, we have subcontractors that that contractor's taken, if it's a plumber, that plumber's taking that pipe to the next job, especially with prices for materials nowadays. Um, but I do agree with you. I appreciate that. Um, there may be, uh, extra, but honestly, there's not a lot.
Okay, and then just the last uh, thing, I know you mentioned you're not a typical contractor, so most people think contractor, heavy equipment, site work and things like that. So would you say most of your work at at a construction site is like internal to the building, so you're not doing earth moving, bringing like site construction debris or anything back to the site or anything like that, right?
Right, so just to clarify, like, we have, uh, upcoming projects and projects we've done, uh, which are process piping for toothpaste, let's say, or, uh, underarm deodorant, or, uh, pharmaceutical products, or, you know, we're doing explosion proof rooms for, uh, you know, uh, something that's going to explode essentially. So these are very specific product, uh, projects that are interior to the building itself. All of these buildings are existing. We don't build new. Uh, we only go in and renovate and do projects like that. We don't do site work, um, roofing or any of the licensed trades, although we sub out that.
Okay, yeah, I just think, you know, I want to get that on the record for the board, you know, obviously any, any potential approval is going to carry, you know, um, conditions and then also just general testimony on the use, so that way, you know, use variance goes with the property perpetuity, you know, if tenants change or the applicant has a desire to sell the property in the future, we just want to make sure it's clear set, you know, what the, what the operations are proposed and, and, uh, you know, what the board is contemplating, so.
That's all. If I could just pick up on where Charlie's going, um, Mr. Luskowski, do you plan on doing any, um, maintenance of vehicles or equipment on site? Something that the board would be concerned about?
Right, no, uh, we go through, uh, Tyresmore, uh, that's our, uh, my maintenance guy. So his, he, if we have that extra truck, that truck is probably on his property, to be honest with you, and he's working on it to get it back on the road. Um, but no, we don't maintain. I don't have mechanics here. Uh, we're not upfitting our trucks or anything like that. We, uh, you know, we go to uh, big splash graphics and, you know, we, we, we utilize, uh, other people to do those things.
Okay, thank you.
Are you anticipating, uh, any new, any utilities to be installed into the garage?
Just electric.
And, uh, the garage that you're proposing is forty feet by sixty feet, correct?
Correct, yes.
There is a comment in one of the engineering reports about the fascia of the, uh, building that's longer than fifty feet. There's a reference to a stone water cable. Can you explain what that is to the board?
As I understand it, I think they were trying to say that when you have like the stack stone, it is like the bluestone, that's going to be the ledge, that's going to, when the water hits, goes off. I'm not sure, but I think that's what it was.
Well, is that anything like that part of the proposed veneer that you proposed for this building?
Yeah, so the front of the, the building itself, I'm looking to have the, the stack stone, okay? So that, uh, on the bottom, it's going to look nice. We would have that, I guess, stone water table, I believe it was called, whatever it was, as well as then siding above that. So that's the, uh, the aesthetic that I like, uh, I'd like to put on for the office building itself. And I'd like to, um, mimic that and put it on the garage as well. So I'd like the garage to look like the building. I don't want two different colors, two different things going on.
So just to clarify for the board, so like up, up to approximately like three, three and a half feet, it's, it's going to have like a, uh, like a split face block or some kind of similar veneer finish, and then the rest will be siding up to the eaves for the, for the, and that's both the garage and for the, for the main, main office building, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the board, because there wasn't any call out on the architectural plans, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, what they're seeing visually is just, uh, you know, what what's actually being proposed.
Mr. Luskowski, was there an issue where you wanted to retain some flexibility as it relates to the siding portion, so the top portion?
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to get pigeonholed into, uh, okay, I said it's going to be gray and it's going to be verti-, you know, vertical or horizontal, or it's, uh, you know, hardy board versus vinyl. I just, I was looking for some leeway there, but, um, I think that if I go back with the architects, we can easily get that design detail ironed out.
Is that, is that something, assuming we get a favorable result here, is that something that can be left uh, for, uh, subsequent adjustment in the resolution, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, those are all the questions I have, Mr. Luskowski.
Um, I, I hate to do this, guys. I have six percent and my charge is not working, so I'm going to switch real quick. I don't know if this interrupts the meeting, sorry. Okay, sorry, guys.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Hughes? Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Cantor?
Sounds good.
My Mr. Sayah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So for Miss Luskowski, um, you know, I'm making assumptions that, you know, you're going to have a cleaning service come in. You're going to generate some sort of waste. Are you going to have a small dumpster on site? Because I didn't necessarily get the clarity of that in, in, in the discussion.
Uh, yeah, so it, um, that's a really great point. The dumpster is, um, I don't have, uh, the availability to show you. Um, Mr. Funlift maybe might be able to, but it's in the rear of the property behind the garage currently. It's where we have it proposed. Um, and sorry about my last name, think of the last cow that can ski. That's Luskowski. I wish I had a, a good Italian name.
I, I was going to ask the same question, but I was going to wait till the engineer, but is that in a, a masonry enclosure?
Uh, if I'm answering correct, yes, it is, with, uh, two closing, uh, gates, um, as well, so it would be completely enclosed.
Mr. Chair, the one comment I I will have about that is it is like a CMU enclosure. Uh, you know, the board typically requires something with, uh, like a split face block or some kind of decorative, you know, to give it like a, an appeal to it as opposed to just, you know, straight block that's, uh, mortared up. So would, Mr. Luskowski, would you have any issue with either split face block or possibly like some kind of veneer or, you know, finish to give it an aesthetic appeal?
I have no issues. Split face is a great idea. That's totally fine.
Either that or whatever the veneer is of the building.
And then, Mr. Chairman? I would like to also ask, how many parking spots or spaces are there going to be on the property?
Eight. There's, uh, seven plus a, um, the, uh, handicap spot.
Well, then, since this is not going to be a around the clock operation, then, um, Mr. Tropally, what am I looking at? Title twenty-nine, is it?
It would be title thirty-nine, which, right, the, the Howlet Township Police would need to, uh, review the application. And if they accept it, then, uh, they could patrol there and, um, enforce title thirty-nine. That's something that, uh, you would like the applicant to, um, look into, then I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I would like that only because it's the, the Route nine highway district. And, uh, you know, for the, for the benefit of the applicant as well.
Provided that the Howlet Township Police, um, agree, uh, Mr. Hanlon, any objection to that? Mr. Hanlon?
He's not there anymore.
No, I, I, I muted myself, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're fine. Did you hear, um, my question, Chris?
I did, and I just, I, I need to discuss it with my client. Maybe we can do that when the engineer's testifying. Um, uh, separately, I've just never dealt with one on a parcel this small. I think I've agreed to them for all of the mobile home parks in town, so I know what you're talking about, but I, I just wanted to discuss it with my client.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, that, there's two last quick clarifying questions, so, um, you know, it's not atypical for the fire official of the board to request like the main driveway that circulates the site be straight as a fire lane and have appropriate signage. Would the applicant have any issue with that for the driveway, Mr. Hanlon?
No.
Uh, and then the last question I just have with, obviously, the trash receptacle, um, or trash refuse enclosures all the way tucked back at the far end of the site. You know, the applicant does need a, a waiver, um, from not providing the minimum thirty foot, uh, circulation aisle required for, um, commercial site plan applications. A lot of that, obviously, this is a narrow site, you got a buffer requirement, some of that is dictated by that, and then also the, the location of the existing, uh, residents at the front of the site. Um, but how, how often does trash refuse collection occur? What times of the day? What type of vehicle? What, um, what, uh, how does the, what kind of control does the applicant have on the hours of, of that occurring? And how does that function with the site, um, from a circulation perspective? The circulation might be something that Mr. Maltese can talk about from an engineering perspective, but, uh, just want to talk about like refuse and and how that's handled.
Uh, Mr. Luskowski, can you answer any of those four questions? Just, uh, asked in terms of control of your, uh, solid waste removal contractor?
To be honest, I haven't gotten that far as far as picking one or, or knowing and, and calling ahead to see how much play I have with them. Uh, so I can't really ask, excuse me, answer the, the question. I'd like to say that I would have leeway with that and would be able to figure it out, so it wouldn't be an issue. But, uh, at this point, honestly, I just haven't gotten to that point, sorry.
We, we also would like Mr. Maltese's input into this subject matter, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sayah, do you have any further questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Luskowski, uh, I, I listened to your opening regarding your business operations and how you're operating out of Millstone. You are going for use variance relief. I think the board deserves to hear your operations on the site for the last year or two and how, uh, what your dealings with code enforcement have been.
Sure, yeah, I, uh, I've been trying to get this put through for a while now. Um, we got hit unfortunately with COVID, uh, which through due to certain, certain circumstances, uh, we had to shut down operations. Also, I had to move from the house into here to do some operations remotely from my house, um, to better protect my family. We, uh, we had two visits, I believe, um, by code enforcement to, I would kind of say like, look, you know, you need to get this prop, this, uh, property proposal moving. Um, and that's when we, the, the last one was like, all right, yeah, we really do. And, and, you know, I had the plans, but it, it's been a lot longer than I expected, to be honest. Um, I'm sorry about that. I, I wish this was a, a much quicker process. Um, but we, we were dealing with a lot of different variables.
So I, I, I did just want the board to have that background information that the operation is, is currently on site. This is a code enforcement case from two thousand nineteen. Um, there was use occurring before any approvals were issued. Um, so I wanted the board to know about that. Also, um, it, we'll probably discuss it more when the engineer testifies in regards to the Woodlands management plan. There were significant site clearing done without approval, uh, that is not being shown as area of trees to be removed. So if the board were to rule favorably, I would like the opportunity to, uh, revisit the Woodlands management plan with a certified tree expert and, uh, recalculate the replacement requirements, uh, based on your landscaping plan.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Matt, Matt, just one clarifying, uh, item for the board. I, I thought that the applicant or at the introduction or maybe his, uh, attorney indicated that, um, although it was a residential structure, some office or type of use operated from the site. Not, nothing prior to the applicant, applicant's operation, right?
No, we, we understood this to be a residential property when we first, uh, talked to the applicant. That's when we had let them know that any commercial use was a change of use, going to trigger approvals. We did go through the, through the concept plan phase and all that, uh, but at the time, there was no change of, uh, change of tenancy that was legal.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that for the board. Thank you.
Matt, one, one other question.
Yes.
Any summonses issued on this or?
Well, no, we operated on good faith with the applicant and he did, for the most part, do a good job. We had to remind him a couple of times, um, but, you know, with COVID involved, uh, understanding the, the level of effort that goes into these applications. Um, we were pretty satisfied that we avoided, uh, formal summonses. Uh, we did want to get him here as quickly as possible, but we, we also wanted to, you know, be honest with the board right from the beginning and, and let them know, let the board know what, what, uh, the history of the site is.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I'm just one quick question for the applicant. You mentioned trailers, twelve and sixteen foot trailers. You said you may be storing them inside the garage, the storage building?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm just looking at it since it's coming in from State Highway, which we know is a pretty fast moving cars. I just didn't know how you would get the trailers from the highway back there without any area to actually back in where you could do any, uh, because you're kind of limited to your space.
Uh, again, it's a little hard to describe, but to get off the highway into the driveway, uh, we've done it currently, uh, but we're, uh, making the driveway wider, so it's going to be much easier to do so. And then what, what you would do is, I mean, I don't know if you could follow. And then what what you would do is, I mean, I don't know if you follow this, but you know, if you come off this street and you're making a right onto the driveway, you go all the way down and then you're going to back into the garage. I I don't know if that really.
I I I use I back up trailers a lot. I understand that. I just Route nine is not really the ideal place where I would want to be backing the trailer in. But um, I mean, that's just one of the things I just wanted, you know, to be, you know, I just want a little of the concerns I had. That's all.
Uh, just to to further clarify, it's not something where we do on a daily basis. These this these are once a month, you know, kind of things. Uh, we're not really uh moving equipment in and out every day. This is uh minimal. It's when a job starts and when a job finishes mostly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Okay. Mr. Hand, or did I hear somebody?
I keep on muting myself. I'm I mean, muting myself. Sorry. All right. My next witness is uh Mr. Maltese.
Can we have your credentials and education background?
Sure. My name is Anthony Maltese. M A L T E S E. Uh, I'm a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, professional planner, and a certified municipal engineer. Um, representing this case is uh from an engineering testimony. Um, I attended Hofstra University, Bachelor's in Science Engineering. NJIT, um, Bachelors in 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 Slant Surveying. And I've appeared in front of Howell several times, uh, City of Elizabeth, Woodbridge, Ocean, Goldsneck.
Uh, any or you a member of a farm?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Are you uh, what farm are you with or?
I'm a principal with Abington Engineering.
Okay, thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Maltese, we uh I'll let you to discuss the engineering plans we've submitted and respond to the uh T and M report.
Yes. Subject site is located sixteen hundred New Jersey State Highway Route nine. It's on the southbound side. It runs from the east to the west. Uh, currently, it's an undersized lot in Zone HD one, which is a highway development one zone. Minimum lot size, eight thousand square feet, uh, whereas we have forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square foot lot. Just roughly over five hundred square feet feet uh over acre. Minimum frontage requirement is two hundred feet. We have a hundred and two point six two feet, which required is a is a non-conforming lot. Our maximum impervious coverage, we have no issue with. It's required seventy percent. Currently, it's eight point nine, and we're proposing twenty-six point three six percent. Uh, a rough increase of seven thousand seven hundred square feet. Currently, the principal building is in within the front yard setback. The requirement's a sixty-foot setback. And the current structure is at forty-one point three three feet. Um, to the rear, there's no issue. And also, the side yard setback, uh, we believe that there is no issue under existing or proposed conditions. Our maximum building height with the second floor addition also meets uh the requirement for the allowed. And um currently, the drainage patterns run from the front of the site, which is the east side to the west to the rear and off to uh the adjacent properties at the same time. The properties encumbered with roughly fifty percent wetlands, including um the associated wetland buffer fifty feet. The application is right now is with the EP. We uh we're seeking an LOI on that and um it's been going on for about ten months now, I believe, almost twelve months. We have not heard back from them, but we're ninety percent confident that this is what we show on the plan is where they're going to approve it. As the applicant stated, we propose a uh a garage forty by sixty roughly. We also propose a new septic system uh to to remove the old one, which is currently undersized and replace it with a a new conforming system.
You already filed.
Only bathrooms on site.
Have you filed the county for that?
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes, they witnessed the borings. Um, we have to finalize one comment of where the potable water is. And once we resubmit, um, there should be no issue with approval. Currently, the site is is public water. There is no well. It's just septic. We proposed widening the current driveway, building a new entranceway. And that actually had caused him to remove five feet of the existing structure to reduce the size. The parking meets the requirement. Uh, required is eight spaces and we have eight. We um indicate eight.
Real quick, on on the driveway, are is that going to require D D O T um permits?
Yeah, y- yes, it is. Yes.
Have you already filed?
We have uh we have not. We will comply with with whatever they come with, though. I know Mr. Conliffe had mentioned in his report about a site triangle easement. Uh, we do show the site distances on on the site on in the front entryway. Um, and we will comply with any uh site triangle easement that that either the DOT requires or Howl Township.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's a DOT that, you know, their try say triangle requirement is going to trump and govern, uh, you know, that site driveway. So as long as uh they get their minor access permit, I think that's probably what it's going to fall under from DOT. Uh, I take no exception to the to the site triangle. I just ask, you know, whatever the final site triangle, they got to obviously dedicate a um you know, easement to the uh to the township and uh provide, you know, meets and bounds and and a legal description for the board's review and approval. Just to clarify, Mr. Maltese, you said, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Maltese, just to clarify. So you said, obviously, you got a pending application for the LOI to the EP. Um, you're ninety percent confident under the that it's a fifty-foot buffer. You know, obviously, should anything change, should this board rule favorably, you know, it would be a condition of approval that you got to get the LOI. If anything changed, you'd have to, you know, applicant would have to come back to the board to amend the approval. Um, and then we talked about, obviously, public waters available, so no well. The septic, you investigated the availability or lack thereof of public sanitary sewer to the site?
Yes, we don't we don't have any information um or knowledge of any uh public sewer coming in the near future.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify for that, so I have been in contact with the engineering department. I think this falls under New Jersey American Water Sewer Service area. I do not believe that they have any existing or proposed infrastructure along the property frontage. So, um, so obviously, I take no exception to this septic system proposed. But I would just ask that any approval be conditioned that should public uh sanitary sewer become available in future, they'd be required to connect at that point in time and obtain any, you know, Monteflo County Board of Health certificates abandoned for the existing septic. Is that acceptable, Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah, yes.
You can keep going, Mr. Maltese.
Sure. It was also mentioned regarding the signage um in the front of the property along Route nine. Uh, we did move the sign back to the twenty-foot requirement setback. However, there was the detail that showed it as a five-foot wide sign by six foot high. Uh, we will comply with the uh requirement of a four-foot wide sign by six foot high. I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, there was a few waivers requested. One of the waivers we just discussed regarding the future proposed sewer service. Uh, the other waiver we discussed was the site triangle. I'm sorry, the traffic report. Uh, we're going to rely upon DOT's application and review process. There was also another waiver requested. Uh, Mr. Conliffe, I think you want to uh discuss maybe that the the additional two point nine two, two point six two feet uh to the north that was in a quick lane deed.
Yes, I just want to clarify for that board. There is like an overlap with the property to the north. And I guess, you know, I just want to in your engineering professional testimony, like, obviously, a quick lane deed uh declares that, you know, that property is part of your applicant's property and you have the rights to build on that part of the property. Is that accurate?
That that's correct. And and this in this case, actually, it it sort of hurt us because now if we didn't have, if you didn't have that piece, we wouldn't have to um we wouldn't have to adhere to the fifty-foot buffer that we we were having, um, you know, going across the property from the residential side. It would be reduced to ten feet, but this is what we have, so we have to go with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the board. So the lot area is forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Our uh buffering ordinance one eighty-eight dash sixty-three requires any lot over one acre, so that's forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, instead of having under an acre, you're only required to have a ten-foot landscape buffer. Anything above an acre, you have to have our fifty-foot buffer requirement. You know, uh, commercial to residential use or zone. Um, so, you know, by having that additional two foot, two and a half foot along the north of the property line, you know, there are five hundred and sixty square feet of property area over necessitating that fifty-foot buffer versus a ten-foot buffer requirement. So I just wanted to note that for the board's record and consideration of the application.
Okay, as part of that checklist, item number seventeen, the waiver requested, um we did already provide testimony regarding the the site triangle that we would um cooperate DOT standards.
Also, Charlie, real quick.
Yep.
Lot lot six point oh one. If that's a Q farm, so they're going to have to have a dedicate. I know it's in the back where the wetlands is. They're going to have to have a dedicated farmland buffer there. Really needs to be shown on the plan.
Yeah, I think that's certainly something, Mr. Maltese, that can be done, right? So you're not proposing any development. And I'm just going to share my screen real quick, just to hopefully simplify that for the board. This is sheet number three of the applicant's most current revised site plan. So the rear portion of the site is encumbered by wetlands and a wetlands buffer. Mr. Chair, I believe you're alluding to the property to the west as being a Q farm?
Yeah, the in the back.
Yeah, so so, Mr. Maltese, you can depict a fifty-foot farmland buffer and the applicant would agree to dedicate that as such easement?
Yes.
I would say I have no issue with.
And I just know for the board, obviously, it it falls within the wetlands and wetlands buffer, so.
But it it needs to be depicted on the plan, though.
Under understood, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there was uh some comments.
I think just to kind of get things going a little bit uh quicker. So I just going through my items, there's a a lot of revised plans or a set of revised plans that were uh submitted by the applicant. They addressed a number of the concerns in my review letters. I'm going to hit on the items that aren't addressed that are outstanding in my letter. So um, we asked that they submit a lighting plan. Uh, they have submitted a lighting plan uh for the site. Um, Mr. Maltese, everything is built and mounted lighting. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And approximate height, we're talking eight or nine feet on the building?
Yes.
Okay, so that complies with the ordinance. As far as the maximum full candle, our our ordinance does allow anything above a maximum average of point five-foot candles. Um, the applicant's proposing one point six foot candle. What I'll say to the board is this is something we've been discussing for the last three years at the Rules Committee of, you know, those levels are, you know, dated fifteen, twenty years ago, or LED was not even a thing. Uh, the only comment I would have is that the applicant agreed to provide houseside shields um for all lighting uh on the, I guess, the south side of the property that abuts that residential use. And that all lighting be on a timer to to either shut off or dim one hour after close of business operations. And then uh maximum light color temperature three thousand K. Um, you know, any anything above that is like the harsh blue light you see, you know, when someone's driving their uh luxury sports vehicle behind you on the road and you can't see a goddamn thing. So uh, we just want to make sure that that's not a an issue for for their site. Um, we talked about the driveway, uh, not meeting the full with the what's required by ordinance thirty foot or twenty-five foot's proposed. As far as circulation, Mr. Maltese, uh, what kind of, you know, trash vehicles are anticipated to the site? And and what can the site currently accommodate with the with the site orientation? Are we, is it a dumpster in the enclosure? Are we talking about like individual recycling and a trash container for just office uh generated refuse or what's anticipated for that?
Um, I will leave that up to uh Robert to answer um what he plans on using. I don't think he's contacted anybody yet. But we designed it for a um a typical dumpster with a front, you know, to load it from the front.
So I guess I guess what I'm getting at is can you walk through how, you know, if it's a if it's a refuse, um, you know, a dump truck where everything is rear-loaded, or if it's a a truck, uh, you know, a truck where it's got the overhead where everything is loaded from the front. You know, a truck, a garbage truck pulling into the site, driving down the site aisle, how how does it navigate to get out of the site?
We discussed this with the applicant. Um, obviously, the the structure in the front is is a tough spot where it's at and where we have to place the parking. And it's just a tough, tough thing, a tough site to move things around to circulate. You know, he's we talked to him and he's going to have to coordinate with whatever company he hires to either come on the weekends when no one's there and be able to access this whole this whole parking lot. Or during the day, they're going to have to go to the front gate and get access and speak to one of their their staff members to move with their car so they can actually come in and out, um, you know, easily.
Anthony, if I may.
As of right now.
Currently, the the neighbors, if you will, they uh they use, um, I'm not sure which service, but they come up, they park, they walk, they get the um, I guess, what you would call pedestrian, a garbage can. I I don't see why we can't go that way. Uh, we're really not creating a ton of garbage. Uh, we could do it during hours. Um, you know, I I wish I had a better answer and 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 I went and talked to these companies. But that right now is what most people seem to be doing uh near me. I don't see why we can't emulate that and do the same thing. Um, if it's an issue, because that's a very simple solution, in my opinion. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, just, you know, this is just some food for thought for the board and for the applicant. I'm sharing my screen and most current site plan. So um, right now, you know, any vehicle for trash, you know, refuse coming in, it's got to come head on in. And then potentially, if it's a front loader, it has to back out of the site. Or if it's like a rear loader, it's got to come and then back into the site to load itself and then to drive back out. Um, I guess it would require some additional buffer, potential buffer disturbance, but, Mr. Maltese, could this could the basin be slightly reconfigured? And could the trash refuse enclosure be slightly put pushed back where a separate, you know, like turnaround area could be provided along the backside of the building? So if it were, uh, you know, a front-end loader, they could pull in and and maybe make a K-turn or 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 something of the like to to allow us for easier accessibility? Is that something that could be achieved?
We can absolutely, you know, look back and see how we can um maneuver that basin. And if we push the trash enclosure right up to that clearing line or the or the buffer, if you will, um, it's still going to be a tough area for that that distance. You would need, you would need at least, you know, twenty to twenty-five feet of 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 the of the uh truck and then, you know, to back out. I I don't, I still don't think that we can achieve the K-turn if you put the trash enclosure to the back any further. I, I don't, I still don't think that we can achieve the K-turn if you put the trash enclosure to the back any further. And I can't.
How about, how about if you locate? How about if you put in a turn area and you located the enclosure in this general vicinity? Could uh, you know, a front loader come in, back out, and then come back out in that kind of direction? Or if it were a?
That might be a possibility.
So the, the only caveat I would say to that, Mr. Chair, and to the board, is just to consider, obviously, we talked about the buffer requirement. This line going north-south here is the fifty-foot buffer. So that could potentially require some additional partial disturbance of the buffer, but, you know, I'll leave it up to the board's discretion. Then obviously, the planning testimony from the applicant's planner on, you know, um, you know, obviously, they're seeking disturbance of the buffer as is, but um, you know, something that might promote general site uh accessibility and safe, you know, egress and ingress from the site. I think that might be something that the board should weigh in, in any potential consideration of, 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 you know, granting relief for that buffer. But um, um, you know, we can, we can get back onto that as far as.
Charlie, Charlie, real quick.
Yep.
If they were to do what you said, move that to the side and then put a backup on the, on the side there?
Mm-hmm.
Where the truck can just back up and then exit the property? That would eliminate the issue, you know, that Mr. Mertens had with the trailers there to give them room to pull in and then back the trailer.
Exactly. And I will note, obviously, um, the fire official did issue a memo too, where he had the same concerns that we're talking about now here, not just for his apparatus, but also um, you know, for garbage and and other emergency vehicles. So, you know, in my engineering testimony, I think, you know, some type of turnaround for a site like this would definitely uh promote, you know, safety and welfare of, you know, the site and general public, um, you know, and would necessitate, or, you know, I think would validate a, a, an encouragement to the buffer, but I'll let to, you know, I'll leave that to our planner and and the applicant's planner to to dis- discuss that further when it gets to the planning testimony. Um, we talked about, um, so our ordinance requires curb and sidewalk along any property fronting a, a public right-of-way. It's Route Nine, it's got existing curb. Uh, they're proposing to match what's there. Um, as far as sidewalk, uh, you know, I, I leave that to the board's discretion. You know, I think on other commercial site plan applications, we required, uh, you know, should DOT also uh allow it, you know, sidewalk along the frontage? Um, you know, that, that would be something for the board to consider. They already have sidewalk, you know, coming from the site, it wouldn't be hard to tie that in to, you know, um, you know, give access to the public right-of-way. Um, they do need relief for retaining wall within uh five feet of the property line. The caveat I'll say to that, for the most part, Mr. Maltese, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, it's, it's generally a five-inch-high curb for probably seventy-five percent of your driveway, uh, matching existing grade on the north side. It's just this last portion where the existing topography slopes off pretty drastically, where um, you're gonna have a, the curb almost transitions into a, a cast-in-place wall. Is that correct, Mr. Maltese?
That's correct. We spoke to, to the applicant about that and uh we would definitely put some kind of safety uh rail or fence.
Okay. Um, we talked about the uh articulation, so you, the applicant did make changes. I just wanna note that for the board. So previously, this was all one-box structure. They did do some recessions to the back of the structure to pull it in, and then they also decreased the height of that last garage bay out of the water table. So they've made some concessions with regards to the architecturals. Um, from a site perspective, as far as grading, Mr. Maltese, you, I discussed with you about um, reducing or or increasing the slope of this, of the basin here a little bit to kind of maximize the infiltration area on the bottom of the basin. You, you think that can be achieved? You have no issue with that?
Yes, no, no issue.
Um, and then as far as just the site is, I, I just wanna note for the board's record and perspective, so um, this is not a major development. So the lot itself and disturbance, uh, it's a one-acre lot, but like I said, the last third of the lot is encumbered by wetlands. So, you know, they're not disturbing more than an acre, and there's already existing impervious on the site. They're not adding more than a quarter acre of new impervious. So they're technically not required by ordinance to provide any stormwater management infrastructure. Having said that, this board knows that we take stormwater management runoff and impacted adjacent properties pretty seriously. We did have a concept plan meeting with the applicant. Um, I did issue a review letter with some comments. They had made changes. Um, and they are proposing stormwater management to size for the two-year storm. So, so um, you know, they could have come in with nothing on the site at all as from a stormwater management perspective, but uh, they've heard my concern and and, you know, what, what we said the, the board's typical concerns are and have provided uh that for the, for, for, um, you know, for the site. Um, see if I got anything else here. Uh, there's a question regarding the gate along the the driveway here. The applicant is providing an OX box. That was one of my comments and also one of the comments of the fire chief. Um, uh, what else do we have here? We talked about the fence on the retaining wall. The signage, we talked about, obviously, they're gonna make a change to it to comply with the width. They also shifted it back, so it completes with the setback twenty foot. As far as um, uh, it still requires, our ordinance requires landscape plantings at the base of the sign. You know, I'll let them uh, you know, discuss that when, when Sherry uh comes up with, with her comments. Uh, obviously, Matt already denoted about the prior tree clearing and then needing to comply with, uh, you know, any um, after the fact for, for, for clearing that was done without approvals. Uh, we talked a little about a lot of the utilities. Um, question I have for Mr. Maltese from an environmental perspective, obviously, we said we're outside of the wetlands. Um, have you, in the Environmental Impact Report, it says that a uh NHP and TNE species um was pending with DEP. Can you provide any information on the status of that? Are we impacting any, you know, threatened and endangered habitat with a proposed development?
As of right now, not that I'm aware of. We have not heard back from them.
And if it were to be that there is some potential habitat, you know, you'd revise the plans in the report to reflect any timing restrictions that would be required to, to mitigate any impact to, to those habitats?
Yes.
All right, um. And Mr. Chair, I think that's really all I have for the engineer at this point.
I, I've got a couple of comments real quick, or questions, actually. Is there gonna be any explosive, any paint, any type of materials stored inside the garage?
Um, no, there's no explosives um that I can think of. There's some paint, uh, yes, I do have a flammable locker. Um, it wasn't really reflected in the plans, but I was thinking about putting it on the outside of the building uh in the back. Uh, that's on a great point and something I'd like to talk to uh Mr. Maltese about. But um, that would be the extent of anything that I could think that would be hazardous.
Now, you would need, i- if, if the amount exceeds what our ordinance is, you'd need to file a plan with the fire department and the police as far as, you know, chemicals or storage.
Uh, yeah, definitely, we will. I understand. Uh, again, I, these are not high quantities. I think you, your basic amount, but I'm gonna refer to um, Mr. Maltese and Mr. Hamlin and and get that figured out, so we're gonna comply completely with what the ordinance is.
Okay. Hey, Charlie, you done?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions from the board?
I just have um one additional clarification. Um, I think the engineer said that uh side yard setback was not required. Um, so I just wanted to clarify what the height of the buildings were, just to make sure.
Twenty-nine.
Four. I cannot read that.
Twenty-nine, four.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I just wanna clarify for the board. So we measure building height. It's the average of the ridge in the east for a uh structure, for a gate with a gable roof. So I think, Mr. Maltese, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, on your site plan, you indicated for the maximum building height for the office would be twenty-three point nine two, so almost twenty-four feet and seventeen point seven feet from the warehouse, uh, for the warehouse or the garage in the back. So our ordinance is for HD one side yard setback, it's twenty-five feet or the uh building height uh proposed. So just to clarify for the board, the garage, Mr. Maltese, is proposed thirty-foot setback from the, the southerly property line? Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so it meets the twenty-five feet and it also meets the building height. And then obviously, you have the twenty-five-foot driveway on the northern side of the property, so inherently, it, it, it meets the setback there. Um, and then same thing for the principal structure. So I think, and I'll zoom to the plan, but you've got the twenty-five-foot driveway to the north, so it, it inherently meets the setback there. It's the south. You're at twenty-six point four feet, so so you meet that as well. So that was just something we asked the board to clarify, because the prior architecturals did not have, you know, the building height or um indicated on the architectural or on, on the site plan. So so that variance is eliminated.
Thank you.
Could I answer your question, Kristi?
It did.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hall, you, do you have any further questions, Mr. Maltese?
I don't.
Okay, we'll open it up to the board here.
I have a, I have another, I, I do have another witness.
Oh, I know, I, I'll see if the board members have any questions. Mr. Sayan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So let me give you, give you a pulse of what I'm thinking. You know, this is a, this is quite an endeavor. You know, converting from a residential to, into the highway development zone. You know, bringing, you know, this site into conformance with what we consider commercial ac- activity. The uh the site is tight. Um, they need the LOI, they need to state DOT requirements. You know, the uh there's the um the fact that there's just not enough space to squeeze in everything that we're looking at right now. So I'm, I'm wondering with Charlie's assistance and and the applicant, you know, forty by sixty. What if we went forty by fifty and took another ten feet off the back? Move things around a little bit to give us a little bit more movement on the site.
So to answer that question, Mr. Chair, uh, could, you know, so there, the garage that's currently proposed, and I, and I'll share my screen real quickly, and then I'll let Mr. Liskowski, you know, uh, elaborate on this a little bit more. But um this is the current architectural plan. So there's four driveway bays uh proposed as is. Could conceivably the last driveway bay be eliminated and could you put a turnaround in that same area on the site without having to really make any modifications to what's currently shown as far as disturbance and location of the basin? Yes, that could be done, but I would, you know, uh, I would leave that up to Mr. Liskowski. They're here for a use variance, you know, um, you know, whether the, he absolutely needs the use of that space um interior for his operations. Um, you know, we've heard testimony regarding, you know, he needs it to store all his equipment and materials indoors. They've already agreed to a condition of no outside storage of equipment and materials. You know, does, eliminating that garage bay then create a concern for, you know, um, a necessity to then store that stuff outside of the building and creating an eyesore to adjacent properties? You know, I'll, I'll leave that to Mr. Liskowski to provide additional testimony and for the board to consider. Um, you know, having said that, um, you know, the only, you know, and to your point too, like, you know, I would certainly have to consider from a site plan application, you know, for adding impervious coverage, you know, we'd have to make sure we're not going down a slippery slope of making this now a major development where it's subject to, you know, the stormwater management regulations and and blowing this application, you know, into another standard of, of what they need to meet. Um, you know, so I, I mean, those are all things for the boards to consider. A clean thing, yeah. Could they lose the bay and uh, you know, have the turnaround without making any, say, changes, yes. But I mean, it really comes down to, you know, applicant's testimony, whether they really need that space for their operations and the use.
Could I answer your question, Paul?
Would you like me to talk? Sorry.
I think he's muted.
Yeah, no, um, Mr. Liskowski, can you uh, can you go ahead and, and, and talk?
Sure, yeah. Uh, I understand what you're saying. Uh, I would definitely like to use all of that space. Um, but I understand what you're saying. I think I, I would wanna see what we could do with the existing first, with the engineer and get his input. Um, but I don't see why I would say no to something like that. I think that's completely agreeable and reasonable. Um, when I like to keep the size as it is, yes. But um, obviously, I'm, I'm looking to work with you guys. I would like to hear what Mr. Maltese would say. If possible, we could get it done with the current conditions, or if we have to refer to that. I think that's probably the, the, the plan B for sure.
Okay, well, you know, we're talking about maybe an outs- outside lubrication slash paint locker, right? So that would, you know, be in that particular footprint if you wiped out the, the back. So that would give you the outside, outdoor storage that you're looking for.
Uh, at the same time, I think that that's not a large locker, and it doesn't have to be exactly in that spot. Um, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think there could be other ways to look at it rather than putting it exactly in that spot. I think unfortunately, I kinda said that was the spot, but not necessarily that's the spot. Um, the other, the other chairman brought up a really good point, to be honest with you. There are some uh paints and flammables, things like that, that I, I would need to get uh the outside locker, but at this point, I don't have the necessary information to really give you a true answer. Um, I'm not sure if that correctly answered what you like to, you know, your, your question, but essentially, yes, I'd be willing to entertain that. Not a problem at all. I would like to see if we could keep the current conditions as is, as we're looking to change to yours.
Could I answer your question, Paul?
Well, you know, how could, I, I don't think I could see it going forward. You know, condensed and concise as it is. I mean, you gotta have some relief somewhere.
I'm always willing to work. I mean, that's not a problem. Um, if that's what needs to be done, then that's what we can do, you know?
So, you know, do we want to defer this and go back to the drawing board? Or what are we gonna do here, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think we just go ahead like it's gonna go as is right now, but they, they might wanna deter, defer and figure out what they can do with that. If they can do with, you know, because it, it's, at the end of the day, if they can keep it and they can move the detention basin a little bit and jiggle that around to where they could get a K-turn here, then, you know, I, I'm sure that that's probably what they would gonna wanna do. But as Charlie brought up, it, I don't know how close the impervious coverage is. You know, it, it's gonna throw it into a major development, you know, it, that, that's gonna play into that fact too. Which, at that point in time, then it would probably be sensible to do away with that last bay. That way, you're gonna eliminate the amount of impervious coverage to add, you know, that footprint of, you know, impervious coverage. So, you know, it, it, it could go both ways.
Well, we're also looking at, you know, the fire chief's ability to turn around. We're also looking at what Mr. Mertens has talked about, the, the ability to maneuver around and and, 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 you know, turn around with the, the, with the trailers and, you know, who's to say we're not gonna have a larger trailer in the future, you know, et cetera.
Right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Say, not to, I'm sorry, ahead, sorry. I just had a thought. You know, perhaps, you know, we're, we're throwing a lot of good points out to the applicant, to the attorney. Mr. Chair, perhaps Mr. Hamlin would like five minutes. With his client to determine whether or not he wishes to go forward. With the use variance, and again, you know, it is a use variance case. Or if he wants to, perhaps, as you had put it, defer. A brief continuance to see whether or not some of the concerns that I'm hearing. Could be um met with the site plan revisions. Mr. Hanlon, would you like a few minutes to talk to your client?
Um always, um I'll take that opportunity, um. However, it seems to me, a couple of things, first. Uh however, we redraw the plans. Whether we go with my client's preference or the suggestion made by Mr. Say, looks like we're gonna have to modify the plans. I'd like to at least finish the application tonight. Um be, and then uh when we're done with the application, uh see what, you know, which fork in the road we want to take. Even if it's just an adjournment for tonight, and before I forget, my client's consenting to the Title Thirty-nine consent. We have re- I have resolved that uh it while you have been focused on these other issues. But sure, let me um, let us mute, let us.
Real, real quick, uh I i- as far, I I know you want to complete your application. But depending on which direction you're gonna go, it's gonna really affect your planning testimony. You know, uh you know, the, because. You know, i- i- if you go one way, you're gonna have certain planning testimony based on. What the impervious coverage, you know. Because that that's gonna affect some of the variances for some of the ball variants.
Mr. Chairman, to your point, so you know, we talked about one alternative, maybe if a, if they were to lose the last garage bay, right? That's already partially within a buffer, if that were to become a uh turn, you know, part of a K-turn turnaround, that really doesn't. Per se, impact the buffer, you know, materially, right, but if. They were to then keep the building the way it is and add a twenty or twenty-five foot wide, you know, K-turner on the back. That's additional buffer disturbance, now we're changing the footprint of the basin, you know, I think that materially impacts. You know, the planning testimony as far, a- as it goes to, you know, impact the buffers. You know, whether or not, you know, the site can promote the, you know, public welfare and and things like that, you know.
Yeah, you.
So I'll take, I'll take the offer, Mr. Chairman, let me have five minutes with my group.
Thank you. Okay, uh Eileen, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Alright, I just want to make sure everyone on my team is muting themselves.
The meeting will reconvene at nine fifty-five.
Okay, Mr. Howland's back?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, um thank you for giving us the opportunity to uh uh think about this, what we like to do, as chairman has asked. For our application to be adjourned. Uh we do want to go back to the drawing board uh to discuss both of the options that have been discussed here today. Um the, but we we'd like to, you know. Consider them with some fine. Planning facts, not hypothetical things, because, I mean, w- w- obviously, we like Plan A, it may not fit. So, um you know, but we want to see it. Um before we make the concession, because, you know, my clients. He he wasn't being frivolous in asking for what he's asked for, he he seriously thought out his business plan and he and he thinks he needs it. But in any event, we want to consider both. Uh everything the board and uh professionals and uh board members. Have uh told us tonight, we're taking the heart, we're focused on it carefully, we understand your obligation to the public. Uh we want a plan that fulfills that obligation. Um in the meantime, my client's gonna reach out with Mr. Aguirre. And um try to work on that tree uh inventory that uh he discussed. So we also also have some more facts uh in that regard when we come back before you.
I I would also ask, please, please include Sherry, Sparrow. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I think it might even, it might even be prudent if Sherry has any quick comments or anything that's like glaringly this. Yeah, put it on the record and in that way, hopefully, they can accommodate it in their in their revisions or what, you know, whatever they come back to the board with.
Also with Mr. Howard, awesome.
Yeah, um I mean, I did issue the letter, so um all my comments are in there, but um. Uh regard, you know, depending on what you plant and if you're gonna plant any sort of buffer or screening. Um it looks like you'll probably need a waiver. From the, you know, to pay for the tree fees. Um so whether it's, you know, what you have currently on the plan, or we have to add additional clearing area for whatever was removed prior. Um you might need to be paying into the tree fund, so you'll need a waiver for that.
Sherry, real quick, is there a way to calculate what was cut down? Um I mean, are the stumps still there or were the stumps rounded up?
When was, when was it done, do you know?
We have some data on that, um we we could go over those details in the coming week, Sherry, I could share our information, we have about. Twenty-three trees that were cut down, some of them rather large, it was about a sixty-five hundred square foot area, just based on. The canopy size from uh aerial image imagery.
Okay, so Rich, if uh if it was sixty-five hundred square feet, I mean. If we know the area, we can use that um to calculate what the fees are.
Okay, I'm good with that, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, just clarify for them, right, so it's not a waiver of having to make a contribution to the tree fund, it's a waiver of not. Providing the plantings on the site and then making contribution to the tree fund.
Right, it's a waiver to be able to pay into the tree fund for what you cannot plant on your site.
Correct.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to throw this out there, you know, for Mr. Liskowski and uh and the team. You know. I hear option A and I hear option B. You know, perhaps maybe there's a hybrid between the two. Where you go with a, you know. You squeeze out as much as you can with the internals, where you have a a double. Roller curtain door and two bays and, you know, you kind of make the best of both worlds. Trying to squeeze everything in, you know, there's opportunity here, you know, I'm hoping you can get there.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. And, you know, hey, you're. You're on a HD, you're in a HD zone. Really trying to defer all the residential's off a HD zone and trying to get it. To the commercial and and so, you know, it's just gonna take some maneuvering. And figuring out, you know, which would be the best way for for you and, you know, for the town, so.
Uh Mr. Hanlon, let's talk about scheduling, um we'll ask Eileen to give us some available dates. Obviously, you have some work ahead of you, engineering and so forth. What does your team believe would be the earliest you'd be ready to come back to the board, with the understanding that there'll be a review period of our professionals as well?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Maltese to chime in here. Uh you're muted, Anthony.
Yeah, we had a couple of personnel changes recently, so we're gonna need at least thirty days on on the plan revisions.
Okay, so you think your thirty days plus um. Time for our board professionals to weigh in. That puts us now in September, October, you're talking about early November, let's say, somewhere in there?
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can make that, yeah, that's no problem.
So Eileen, what do we have available?
I have November eighth.
You want to shoot for that, uh Anthony?
Yeah.
Any other case on that night?
No.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I recommend that the board carry the application without any further public notice. To November eighth, and I don't, I can check to see if we need an extension of time.
Yes, we do.
Uh we do, I would go extension of time through November thirtieth, uh Mr. Hanlon, any question about that, any issue?
He's frozen.
Yeah, um he is.
Back to the North Pole, boy.
Uh Mr. Liskowski, do we have an extension?
Do you know how to read, Mr. Hallen?
Yeah.
He's calling me right now, hello?
Oh, he's out.
Oh, wow, he lost electricity, he's in a big lo-. Uh actual storm, I guess.
Yeah, it's it's coming, could you uh, can you just advise him, Anthony, that uh if he would.
I'm gonna.
Put him on speaker?
Yeah, I put him on speaker, go ahead.
Um Chris, can you hear me? Okay, Chris.
Yeah, he can hear you.
Good, I'm asking you to consent to an extension of time uh to and through November thirtieth, alright?
Yes.
Good, and then the board will carry it to November eighth, at this point in time, uh without any further public notice, okay?
Thank you.
Case, case number BA twenty-one oh six, Robert Lewaski. Will be carried to November eight with no further notice. And the extension of time has been. Agreed to November thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, okay, thank you, I, you know. I'm I'm glad y'all are gonna step back and. Get it, you know, figure out what would be the best way to proceed, I I'm really glad of that.
A- and Anthony, Mr. Maltese, I just one last comment, I would just say, uh I recommend reaching out to the Mr. um Chief Lewis. Just to make sure, whatever you do and accommodate in the back of the site, you know, if you can get his blessing, that certainly goes a long way in the board's eyes as well.
Okay, thank you.
And our professionals also, you know, if you've got questions of Charlie or. Christine or or Jennifer, just feel, you know, reach out to them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other business before the board?
Mr. Chairman, uh just real quick, uh just wanna. Give Eileen a big thumbs up, she did a great job, so you know, doing solo tonight.
Definitely.
Uh, thank you.
Matt, thank you for being there, yeah, I I didn't know Mr. Aguilar was there.
Aguirre. He's incognito.
Well, thank, thank you guys for being here, appreciate it. And if there's no other business of the board, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, just like, before I do that, just like to give him one more happy birthday to you, since we're, for your excellent, have a great birthday.
See you in the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry, I I'm already pushing us to the end of the month, sorry about that, anyway, okay.
Birthday, Wendell, that's all he's doing is pushing.
Make me a year older sooner, huh?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, sir.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Hughes, do I have a second? Second of my Mr. Roscoe, nice to hear your voice here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, guys, thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Good night.
Take care, have a good evening.
Take care.
Night.
Good night.